None of it's working. I, I can see it.
Good evening. Good evening. It's Monday, March eighteenth at five thirty P M. And today is a work session. Day, we won't be having a meeting after the work session. Um, and so today we're going to start out with our city updates from Ms. Fajeco.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Counsel. I do have a couple of announcements today. Very exciting announcements, actually. This Friday, March twenty-second, is the inaugural Pueblo Flag Day. So at ten A M., the Greater Pueblo Chamber of Commerce at three zero two North Santa Fe will host an event to celebrate this new tradition uh, with some light refreshments. This event is hosted by the Leadership Pueblo Class of two thousand and twenty-three. Both Mayor Graham and President Aliff have both been invited to speak at the event. And it should be a lot of fun to showcase our Pueblo pride. Um, if you want more information about it, the Chamber's uh, Facebook page and their webpage has more on the event. Beyond Pueblo, though, um, Pueblo's flag, which was provided by the mayor's office, will be flown over the state Capitol on Friday um, at the request of the governor's office. So um, the P R team from the governor's office has promised to get us some great action pics to share with the Pueblo community, but just know that our flag will be flying over the state Capitol on Friday, which is pretty cool. Um, next, uh, the National Medal of Honor Day is Monday, March twenty-fifth, and that too will be another exciting day in Pueblo. Uh, several events will be taking place on that date. Um, first at ten thirty in the morning at the Dillon Exchange at I twenty-five. Um, that unveiling will be happening with our own major Drew Dix, um, medal recipient will be there as part of that event. Um, later in the day at three thirty at the Center for American Values, they will host an event that will feature not only Drew Dix, but also a special presentation by Medal of Honor recipient and former Assistant Secretary of Veterans Affairs Ronald Ray. Uh, so both of these leaders have obviously very distinguished careers in military service, honored for their heroism during the Vietnam War, and uh, followed by very dedicated uh, long-term careers in both government and business sectors. So it'll be an honor to have both of them at the center for this event. Um, other event highlights include a presentation by Pueblo historian Doug Sterner and U S Army Chief Warrant Officer Alan Hankins, who's the author of um, Little Blue Ribbon. So shaping up to be a very cool day in Pueblo, March twenty-fifth. Hope that you and any members of the public that were are interested will attend those events. Uh, my last announcement is about uh, Paycog, um, Pueblo Area Council of Governments. Their meeting is next week. All elected officials, as I understand, are invited to participate in Paycog and encouraged to do so. Um, they will be holding an orientation for new city councilors on the day of the meeting, which is Thursday, March twenty-eighth. That orientation will begin at eleven A M. with lunch served at eleven forty-five, and the meeting will start at twelve fifteen. Uh, these are monthly meetings and will be held at the Pueblo County Emergency Service Center uh, at one oh one West Tenth Street. And that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. Um, uh, can I ask, say one thing, just to follow up?
You're very nice. I want to share with the uh, city council that Paycog is a responsibility that we have as a city council. It seems like uh, Dennis, I, and Sarah uh, Zooms, but nobody else comes to the meeting. So it's very important that we have representation on Paycog. It's a it, it's something that's very vital to the city. And I hope that everybody shows up on the Thursday meetings. It's the last Thursday of every month. And it's very informative and, and it's something that we all need to participate in. So, thank you.
Okay, great. Yes, go ahead.
Just add a couple of things. We've struggled to get a quorum at Paycog, and that's and the other thing is that the votes on Paycog are really aligned by who contributes the most as far as the budget. We have seven votes. Uh, the county has three votes, and I think uh, the others have one vote, like the Pueblo Board of Water Works and uh, I think District Seventy and District Sixty. So, uh, a couple of things are occurring in Pueblo. One, that big project, the Belmont Interchange, along with the new frontage road, and they're tearing down all of those buildings along the side there. Uh, but Pueblo was designated as uh, being one of the most dangerous places to drive. We, per our population, we've had more fatalities. I think we're number one. And I keep believing that maybe uh, the neglect the state on our highways are partly responsible. If you look at our freeway, it doesn't look much different than it did fifty years ago, especially on the south end. Uh, we got areas that flood. We got, so we, we've got to be pressing more as a community in Paycog, you know, to turn that around. So I echo what uh, Councilor Aliff just said. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Latino.
Dennis and Mark, I agree with you because uh, when they expanded I twenty-five from two to three lanes in the, in the Goat Hill area, they uh, bought a number of houses out and uh, put trees in there and, 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 and uh, sprinkling system, but they never did anything else. And there's weeds all over the place. So I think somewhere along the line, we, we need to let, let the state know that they need to start taking some responsibility for the things they're doing and, and get some things done here. I agree with you both. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, thank you, madam. I, on the uh, before I saw this, I had uh, signed up for the Downtown Association Luncheon, which is the same day at eleven forty-five. So that was just what I, what I had done, but I'll reevaluate that far as a priority.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Alrighty. Um, and then we were looking um, to be able to give direction to move the R F P for the attorney and the um, the admin, um, get the job posting going. Um, so can we get that done today?
So the, it's my understanding that the work session on those issues was moved to April twenty-second? And so, and that the posting, nothing would be done on that until after the work session?
No, we canceled that posting.
Okay.
And we cut, canceled the work session um, and that we were gonna go ahead. We had put a work session, but then I had a conversation with the mayor to move that. Just, we're just gonna move the R F Ps and the job posting forward.
Okay.
Uh, with a consensus from council.
So it's, if you want to hire the personnel, we need a job description, and we need to have some more information to give direction before we can post that job.
Well, they, they gave it to us. They sent it out to us.
We have the attorney.
For the approval and the R F P.
All right. So we can, um, it's still my recommendation to go ahead and, and wait on that until we have a work session, so we can talk about the attorney ethics guideline that I have prepared. I had it prepared for tonight, but I know it got moved off, moved off tonight. We can put it on another work session. We can talk about it. If we're gonna do an R F P, can send out an R F P, but any attorney that is gonna be hired is gonna be hired through the attorney's office, through the city attorney by code and by charter. So that, that person that you're gonna hire, this third party, is still gonna be under the direction of the city attorney.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's what we were gonna talk about at the work session. But if, if you want to do that, we can put out an R F P, but I, at this point, what I have designed to do is to um, have an attorney from the office represent you folks as a department, just like any other department.
Mm-hmm. Um, President Aliff?
So see, that's specifically why we need an attorney. Uh, we specifically need an attorney because I don't agree with you, and I don't think that the charter or that the uh, municipal code or anything else says that we cannot hire a contract attorney. But you know, I guess we just have to rely on your opinion on that. So maybe we shouldn't have a work session, so we could all have our ducks in a row and, and, and hear what it is, the, the, the reasons why we can't all of a sudden hire an attorney, a contract attorney for city council.
So we
We need to make it quick.
Yeah, we'll have to, um, we'll have to just put it into, um, how, how much time do you need?
So probably, uh, what do you know, your work session, fifteen, twenty, twenty minutes for a presentation? I can do that.
Okay. So I've got, um, I've got one slot filled for next week. I'll just have to maybe, um, keep it into next week.
Okay.
Because we could, we, we could have kept it for tonight. But um, I guess misinformation, you know. So, yes, go ahead, Dennis.
I just wanted to add uh, that, you know, this will be the third time we've tried this. So there are templates uh, both in the purchasing department and probably in your office. Uh, Dan Kogosik set up R F Ps and gave us, I thought he'd given us a legal opinion at that time.
Mm-hmm.
But it's so far back. I, I don't remember uh, what was put together, but that might be a good place to start because this will be the third time we've tried this. And uh, the other two did not garner enough uh, votes to move forward on.
Okay. I'm happy to look, and I, I didn't know he had done a previous legal opinion. I'm happy to take a look at that.
And Mrs. Haden in purchasing, uh, she ran both of them through the purchasing department.
And I sent it, I sent it out.
Issue. It's
I sent it out. Everybody got emailed the, the R F P that we sent out on the last time and was supposed to comment on it, say whether you had any objections to what the wording was or whatever. And I never heard anything. So my assumption was is that everybody was okay with the wording of the previous R F P. I mean, we're personally, I'm with uh, Counselor Flores. I've been seven years trying to do this, and every time we try and do this, this is what we get. That, well, you know, we have to do this, and we have to do that. I mean, we're literally hiring an attorney to represent city council, a contract attorney that works as needed. It's, I don't think it's rocket science, and I thought that we had this settled six years ago. Uh, and it, and it was all going to happen at that point. We just didn't like the attorneys that came forward, and it went sideways and, and, and went away.
And last time uh, with Mr. Kogosik, when we attempted to do it, when I first came onto council, he said at that moment, we could put out an R F P. If we knew an attorney, we could already put that attorney up for interview to be appointed. Um, he never said anything about it coming out of the law department.
Okay.
So just that's, that's just the background.
Sure. And I'm, I, I will give a presentation at the work session, and we can talk about it. I know the R F P is drafted, so the R F P is not the issue. The issue is um, the, the fact that it needs to be hired by the city attorney. All legal, the city attorney's office represents council. We are your attorney. We represent the city, and we represent city council, just like any other department of the city. And so you're going to get independent legal advice from the city attorney's office, just like you should get from anybody else, just like we provide to any other department. That legal advice is unbiased, it's objective, it's gonna present you both sides. It is not going to take on anybody's agenda. And so, and I think that's what you're concerned about, and I understand that. But um, give me an opportunity. We'll put it on the work uh, session next week. I'll present to you, and, and we can talk about it more.
Hey.
Included included in your report, if you could do two things. One, the city of Colorado Springs, who has a mayor, and the city of Denver, they both have separate legal people to deal with them, and they, they probably have three or four, but they do work under the auspices of whoever the, is in charge of the legal department.
They, they do. And in city, in the city of Colorado Springs, it is an attorney that is assigned to city council within the city attorney's office.
Right. So I don't think there's a, a separate contractual arrangement.
No.
Uh, and, and then the second, so we, we'll talk about that at work session, but there's another issue, and that is uh, we are not gonna get many attorneys to apply for this R F P if we don't clarify that and delineate what we're actually looking for, because I know we had trouble with one law firm that backed out because it was nebulous whether or not they had the autonomy just to deal with us and not involve the city. So if we don't clarify that line, uh, we may not get anybody to apply. So, just my comments.
Mr. Latino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Miss Sykes, it, it has nothing to do with you. It has nothing to do with the city. It has to do with the fact that Pueblo needs to come into the twenty-first century. It really does. When you've been in other places, and I have been in other places and came back home. Uh, in fact, I was in the fifth largest city in the state for quite a long time as an administrator, educator, administrator, et cetera. And, and, and love this community, but it's just like not having offices. City council. My goodness. People, come on. We need to come into the twenty-first century, Pablo. It's time. Thank you.
Mr. Gomez.
I just think some of the crush issues are a problem, and they're underneath the surface, and I don't think anybody wants to hurt anybody's feelings. I got it. But I think we can all come together eventually, and I don't understand the fear on either side. If we're gonna explore it, let's explore it honestly on both sides and see where we come out. I'm not opposed. I'm just saying we have to be more open about this kind of stuff.
Mr. Hernandez.
Since I'm merging in early or late, if you will, are there documents that you can send me that have been already kind of wheelhouseed around far as uh, the, the job scope or contract scope that was previously done? Is that what we're looking for, or partially?
So the, the R F P has already been drafted.
Okay.
And so council's already looked at that, and I'm sure we can provide that to you. As far as the ethic guidelines, I will get that out to council tomorrow. Um, so that you can take a look at that. And then that's what we're gonna be, that and, and the code is what we're gonna be talking about on Monday at the work session.
Madam Chair, can I just ask for clarification on the admin assistant? I know that that job description went out to everybody, and I know that Counselor Hernandez and you had some, some feedback on that, but are you wanting us to move ahead with that piece, or are we discussing that at another work session, or?
No, we should just go ahead and move, uh, at least get that started.
So that'll be
Cause if no one responded to it, they must have been, I, they must have been okay with it. Yes.
Can I, I, so I thought we were talking about that at the April twenty-second meeting. Uh, Council rules and procedures and admin assistant position. So my comments were reserved until then.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to, I, I, so I'd, I'd like
I thought it was the council procedures. I didn't realize they added admin to it because
It says on the paper.
Well, I see that now. But that wasn't the discussion, and maybe I didn't check it.
I'd like for, I guess, my concern with emails going back and forth is that I, I don't know if we necessarily get a chance to review all of our, all, everyone's feedback. Um, I know that I saw Counselor Hernandez, but I know that, you know, we have to be really strict about not emailing every, you know, all
About replying all.
Yes. So I would like to have an open discussion about the admin assistant. Um, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. All right. Well, you know what? We're, we're just gonna go from work session to work session and continue this conversation. I mean, because I don't know how many times we've talked about it just since the uh, retreat, and it's just not getting anywhere anytime soon. So next week, we'll listen to what you have to say, and then we will go to the admin on the twenty-second, and we'll go from there. Okay? And this time, commitment, we're committed to those two dates, next week and the twenty-second. All right.
Yeah, I, I support what you're saying, because we do need administrative assistant. There's no question about that.
Okay.
Again, we need to come to twenty-first century in Pueblo.
Yes. And Clyde, we can't see, we don't have anything. Our screens are blank. Before we start, do we need to pull the card and start over, or what needs to happen?
Some work, some don't. Yep. You start with.
Okay. Um, Mr. Romero, are you there?
Uh, I am here, Madam Chair. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Let's go ahead and get started with your updates, please.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, uh, Mayor Graham, uh, President Aliff, and members of city council. A busy week for us this week, uh, just to let you know. A big bill up on, on Wednesday. There's actually a, a bus that's gonna leave uh, Pueblo with uh, a number of, of community members uh, that will come to the Capitol. Uh, and some will testify on uh, uh, the two big bills that obviously we've been, you know, we've been talking about for the last couple of weeks. Uh, Senate Bill one sixty-six and House Bill thirteen thirty-eight. Senate Bill one sixty-six is on Wednesday, and uh, and House Bill thirteen thirty-eight is on Thursday. Uh, I just wanted, uh, on behalf of your lobbying team, express our appreciation uh, for the leadership of the mayor and members of city council and the hard work of uh, uh, city attorney Carla Sykes to get these resolutions out. Uh, we've uh, we, we have been uh, inundated with requests on those two resolutions for uh, the Pueblo logo. Uh, they'll probably want the Pueblo flag once we, we, we know there's the, the Pueblo flag. They, uh, they, they have gotten really positive, positive uh, results uh, in terms of uh, of the resolutions. Uh, so uh, you know, we'll be reporting out on uh, those two bills on Wednesday and Thursday. Just wanted to, you know, the, the resolutions are incre, you know, incredibly important. They're incredibly persuasive. Uh, we've gotten them out to all of our delegation. Uh, Everest has got, has taken those uh, those resolutions, and they've also disseminated them to leadership in both uh, in, in both the committees that are gonna hear this bill, but also leadership in both the House and the Senate. And of course, our delegation uh, got a copy of the resolution. So again, thank you for that. Uh, I just wanted to invite uh, uh, anyone on city council or the mayor, if anyone, anyone would like to testify on either of these bills, uh, the one that's scheduled for Wednesday or the one that's scheduled for Thursday, please let us know. We're happy to, to walk you through all of the logistics. We can help you with talking points. And we can also uh, a- again, uh, do all of the, the labor in terms of getting you signed up if it's something you want to do. And if you want more information on that, please, uh, after this work session, please email us and let us know uh, if you would like to do that. Uh, one last thing, uh, I'm battling a cold, so I'm gonna turn this over to uh, uh, Ryan and Alec. Uh, we did send some information to you on the state budget. Uh, I know a number of council, uh, counselors are, are really uh, focused in on uh, some uh, significant uh, legislation around childcare. We're trying to follow that, but the, 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 the forecast uh, was presented on Friday, and it's gonna be a pretty tough budget this year. Uh, not a lot of, of leeway in terms of, of additional or significant appropriations for new legislation, but we are trying to prioritize based upon uh, the, the uh, info, information you've given us around child welfare and childcare specifically and around criminal justice. Uh, and we're also thinking that, you know, on the positive side of this, a number of the bills that are trying to be enacted that could im, impact manu, manufacturing in Pueblo have really significant uh, uh, fiscal impact. And with the significant uh, fiscal note, uh, those bills potentially could die in appropriation. So uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan Alec to just give you uh, a little bit more uh, uh, meat on, uh, on the week.
Okay, thank you, Gil. Good evening, everyone. Um, as Gil said, I, I'm just gonna touch on a few. He, he talked about some of the bigger bills we're watching this week. I'm gonna go over some of the other things that we're keeping an eye on. Um, first up is House Bill twenty-four ten eighty. The title is youth sports personnel requirements. Um, we've been asked by someone on the um, city staff to keep an eye on this one. It had its first, or it has its first Senate committee hearing uh, Thursday at one thirty. Amendments were added in the House that further defined youth sports activities and organizations, as well as changing the requirements for C P R and A E D certification. The, the provision that required every person to have C P R, A E D certification was changed to at least one adult with current first aid and C P R, A E D certification must be present. Um, wi, with exceptions provided for certain situations. So we, we'll still be keeping an eye on that one, but it, the, it's been amended since its first, since its introduced version. The, the next bill is House Bill twenty-four twelve thirty-five, aviation impacts on communities. This bill passed its second committee in the House today. It'll be headed to the House floor. This is a bill that President Aliff asked us to keep an eye on. Um, as introduced, it would have had a a pretty big impact on businesses at the Pueblo Airport. The, the first version of the bill included a tax on leaded aviation fuels, which um, as I already said, sorry, would have, would have had a significant impact on, on some of the aviation companies at the Pueblo Airport. Uh, in its first committee hearing, the bill was amended and a strike below was added on, which completely changed the bill. So the, the new version of the bill is much less burden, burdensome. It includes financial incentives, including a, an income tax credit and a grant program to encourage the transition from leaded to unleaded aviation ga, gasoline. Uh, furthermore, it establishes requirements for airports to phase out sales of leaded aviation gasoline and adopt noise abatement plans, emphasizing the need for community and environmental protection. Uh, the next bill, pardon me, Senate Bill twenty-four one sixty-six. This is the bill that Gil me, mentioned on, on Wednesday. The title is air quality enforcement. Um, and I believe we've talked about this a few times, but the, this legislation establishes stricter enforcement measures for air quality violations, defining repeat violators and high priority repeat violators, and mandating compliance orders, civil penalties, and root cause analysis for such violations. The, the next bill, uh, House Bill thirteen thirty-eight, cumulative, cumulative impacts and environmental justice. Its first committee hearing is Thursday at one thirty. And this is the bill that corresponds to one of the resolutions that you all passed uh, last Monday. The next bill is House Bill twenty-four twelve thirty-nine, single exit stairway, multifamily structure. Its first committee hearing is tomorrow. And this bill, by, by December first, twenty twenty-six, counties and municipalities must adopt or amend building codes to allow a single exit to serve no more than five stories of a multifamily residential building. Um, so we're, we're expecting quite a few amendments on this one, uh, but we'll, we'll be covering that, and we will report out as soon as the committee is done. Uh, the next bill, House Bill twenty-four thirteen oh eight, effective im, implement, implementation of affordable housing programs, which seeks to better regulate how the state operates housing programs and works to bolster housing. The bill aims to streamline the application and award process to improve efficiency and timelines in distributing affordable housing development grants and loans. Um, it mandates clear timelines for application review and decision-making. The bill aims to provide a more structured and timely process. Specifically, the bill establishes new requirements for division of housing and local governments regarding affordable housing programs. It mandates procedures for pro, processing affordable housing program applications, including set timelines for decision-making and requirements for next steps after application outcomes. Additionally, starting in twenty twenty-five, the D O H must include information on an affordable housing application and funds in its annual public report. And that bill's first committee hearing is tomorrow as well. And just a side note, both C M L and C C I are in support of that one. Uh, last but not least, for me, House Bill, or sorry, Senate Bill twenty-four one thirty-one, prohibiting carrying firearms in sensitive spaces. This for, uh, this bill's first committee hearing is Wednesday at one thirty. The bill pr, prohibits carrying firearms, both openly and concealed in specific sensitive locations, imposing fines for violations and providing exceptions for certain individuals and situations. Um, and sorry, I lied, not last. The last thing I have, I, I'd like to speak about is uh, to circle around to uh, something that Counselor Flores something that Counselor Flores asked last week on Senate Bill one seventy-four, which is the Housing Needs Assessment, the one that we, we, I, I briefly spoke about. It, it's an effort that CML is pushing. And Counselor Flores, I believe you asked if, if there was money attached to the bill. We did a little, a little digging into that, and there's not, there's not going to be money directly doled out to the local governments. However, the, there is an appropriate, there is money for the Division of Local Affairs to help local governments with those needs assessments in that bill as of right now. It's still very early. That bill could change quite a bit. We will be keep, you know, we'll keep a close eye on that. And any more information we get on that, we will bring to you as soon as we hear it. So with that, I'm done. As Gil said, if, if anyone would like to testify on Thursday or Wednesday on either of those bills, please feel free to reach out to any of us and we will help you get signed up and, and whatever other information would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'm sorry, I couldn't, couldn't hit my buttons. That's our presentation for this evening.
Okay, any questions from council? Actually, Mayor Graham.
Counselor Maestro, I will be up there on Wednesday too for the Everest bill. So if there's any points that council would like me to talk about, if you want to just send them to me before Wednesday morning, I'd be happy to carry your thoughts on.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, that's our presentation for this evening, and we will get, thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
With us. And so we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have some educational training tonight regarding Home Rule City. We are Home Rule City, Pueblo is, and Action Colorado is going to come forward and talk to us about that and what it means, not only just for everyone here tonight, but also the community to understand what Home Rule City means. So with that, I'm going to introduce Brian McCain and Sarah Blackhurst from Action Colorado, formerly Action Twenty-two.
Hi, guys. I have some handouts, so let me get those to you while he gets those slides up.
Okay, okay, so we're gonna, while you're handing that out, we're gonna do some tech. We've got some technical difficulty, so he's gonna take some time to get that up and running.
Madam President. Why don't we just adjourn for about ten minutes so they get this technical difficulty taken care of? That's fine. Thank you.
Alrighty, it looks like we're back up and running. So let me reintroduce our guests. We have Sarah Blackhurst and Brian McCain with Action Colorado. And they are here to not only educate ourselves, but the public on what our rights are as a home rule city. Sarah, would you like to start?
Thank you, and thanks for having us over again. This is just a little bit of a reminder, refresher. It's all stuff you already know. But before we get started, I want to reiterate that we are not attorneys. And so any specifics that you need, that needs to be referred back to your own attorneys. But this is just to help you really start to ask some questions if you want to. And then also, Home Rule is something that comes up every single legislative session. There's something that's gonna push back on that Home Rule piece, and we'll go over that in just a minute. And then we'll go through this. You have handouts. There's two of them. One of them was a, it's just a reminder, a quick reference guide on Robert's Rules of Order. I know that as I get older and things get a little hectic, it's hard sometimes to keep track of things and where we're at in a meeting. And so this is just a little ready reference guide for you. And the other one is from Legislative Services, that actually talks about Home Rule. So, so first and foremost, and again, this is stuff that you already know, what the responsibility, what your responsibilities are versus what the mayor's responsibilities are. And we'll go over that in a second. But this is to also help the public remember what it is that you guys are actually able to do. I think sometimes people come to you with a lot of things. I know elected, elected officials on all levels have this, where they come and they expect you to be able to do something about speed limits or something. You know, they want you to do a lot of things that maybe you sometimes can't. So this is what really you are, and this is state statute, adopt a budget, act on ordinances, approve the mayor's appointments. And when there is, when you're the governing body, that's to collectively coordinate that municipal administration. Whereas the mayor has not much to do at all. Just kidding, Heather. The mayor serves as the chief executive, and I'm gonna keep coming back to that in a second because that really will help you understand and help everybody understand the difference between that. The mayor, as you know, the strong mayor is relatively new, but it's budget hires and direct staff and proposes ordinances for the municipality. Okay, so the main thing about Home Rule and really what it was initially put together, and this is really old, it was in nineteen oh two, but it's so you can levy taxes that you're going to be self-governing the, the taxing authority. So a lot of what you see that's going on right now, and it's going to happen constantly because Tabor is unique in the country, it's hard to know what, or to look to other states or anybody else. We have to have that managed here. So with regard to that, there's a lot of, there's always going to be a lot of tension that goes back and forth with the state and with municipalities with regard to that. As you know, in twenty nineteen, the governor signed in and they started that sales, tax, and use system. And I think that you guys are already on that, but it was just to try to centralize that and make it a little bit easier for municipalities to do that. Before, it was very, very cumbersome. If you remember, you could have to go through a whole lot of steps. So what we call Home Rule is just the shorthand for what local powers are. And this goes back, as I said, to nineteen oh two when they passed this. And here was the definition. It's very, it was very confusing at the time. So what it was is just that you have certain powers that, that you can administer on your own municipalities that really don't have anything to do with the state. So when we get into a lot of these land use issues, that's when you really have to understand what, where those lines are. So this is basically a governmental powers are divided into three classes, local, statewide, and mixed. When they updated those, and they'll update those periodically, what does that mean? It means different things to different people. When you're talking about land use issues, this will come up more for counties than necessarily for municipalities, but it most certainly comes up a lot on land use for municipalities. Along that vein, there's not as many counties who are home rule. There's very few counties in Colorado that are home rule, but that most of the municipalities in Colorado are home rule. If they're not, they're very, very small. So this is it. And this is the part you need to remember. If it's classified as local, municipal law trumps a conflicting state law. If it's classified as a state law, the, that trumps conflicting municipal law. And if it's both, if it's classified as both, the state will win out on that. So that's where it gets really tricky in saying, is this a local? Is this statewide or is this mixed? And so sometimes that's what the fight is. So it depends on what you're wanting to accomplish and how far you can, how far you can take what you're working on. But that's why it's really important to be keeping track of, especially the list that Gil gives you, to be keeping track of what powers you have and you don't have and what's threatening that. CML and CCI both do a really good job of letting everybody know if something's in jeopardy. But I would encourage you to do your own due diligence on that. So, as I said, most of them are linked to that. So think about it like this, what's the relationship between the federal government and the state? That's going to really mirror what the relationship is between the state and municipalities or home rule and local governments. If you think about it from that perspective, it helps you understand a little bit better. But again, that's something, that right, those authorities that you have are something you have to pay attention to, or they could get lost really quickly.
And why that's important when it comes to legislation in the legislature. There have been court cases in the past where, say, a municipality, municipality bans all oil and gas permits or, you know, no fracking in this county or this municipality. And the states actually jumped in and won in court on that, saying that that does not represent the good of the state and the laws they passed. So for that to happen then, if you could imagine the way the state goes with its laws or legislation being passed, you know, if that case came up today, the municipality could have won that and they would have upheld the banning on, you know, just oil and gas permits. Now, this could go with anything. I use that as an example because that was a big one, and I think it was Longmont was the municipality that did that.
So that also applies right now. There's, there's a bill that's up right now with regard to pesticides. Same kind of thing. So this, so these are ones that are recurring every year on that. The, the term that you'll see and you'll hear a lot of the advocates for local government, you'll hear preemption, and that's a federal term, but it means that they can preempt, the state can preempt certain things and certain things they can't, and some, certain things are for fighting over. So this is how the Supreme Court, and this is, is a little outdated, but not, not very specific. Like, so the things that have changed don't change the nature of this, of these four things. So is there a need for statewide uniformity on it? What are the extraterrestrial effects, traditional practice? Or extraterritorial, I'm sorry, and specific. I've been hanging around with Brian too long, and he talks about UFOs all the time. Specific allocation in the Colorado Constitution. So that is when it goes to, when issues like this go to the Supreme Court, those are the four things that they're looking at and to make your, to make your case about. Okay. So I said this was going to be really, really short, and it is. And we can just have lots of questions and talk out some scenarios and some things that you're concerned about. Because it is a home rule and it collects and administers its own sales use or sales and use tax, this is going to continue to come up for you guys for all the time. So this is something that you have the right to look at, to review. And this is one of the things that the state tends not to get in the middle of because, for all the reasons. As we, I said earlier, we are hearing a lot about land use. And then really the fights that we're going to see in the next, in the next few years are the ones that we've already seen with regard to environmental issues. And what, what does that have, what effect does that have? For the most part, you're going to have, the county's going to have to deal with those issues. But that doesn't mean that you're completely out of the fight when we're talking about those things. There, we had, last year, we had the, the lawnmower, the lawnmower bill, if you remember the lawnmower bill. Well, it's back. So the lawnmower bill was meant to get rid of all gas-powered equipment. So lawnmowers, weed So lawnmowers, weed whackers, all of those things and tried to push toward all electrical. They put too many things in the bill and very early on, we started calling it the lawnmower bill. So it did get killed. It is back this year and there's some different things. What we usually do when we're trying to mitigate damage on these things is make it leave it. Say, you know, pass this or whatever, but it's ultimately up to local government what they want to do. So you'll see a lot of those kinds of bills that will try to do a state, do a statewide push on something. And in order to mitigate the damage, because this is an attainment area, it's, it's, we've. While we have to be really thoughtful on how we do some of these things. The, the rules that apply in Denver don't necessarily need to apply here. And so that's why you have to be really diligent in, in watching some of these things. And then preemption is a word you're gonna hear a lot. If you are listening and, and somebody says something about preemption. You need in any of the legislation or the rulemaking that happens, you need to pay really close attention to that. Because that is, that is something that they're saying that is gonna start to push onto your, or push back. On that local control. So, go ahead.
And last session, we were testifying on a bill that it was the land use bill, wasn't it? And one of the comments that was made by somebody from a state agency was, with all due respect. They've had local control long enough and it's not working out. So the state needs to step in and fix these communities, these municipalities and these counties. Which we're seeing with some of these air quality bills.
Yeah. So that's what we wanted to just give you a refresher on some of those things. It was to help you better navigate a little bit, some, some flags that you need to be paying attention to. Some of these things are really great. They're well intentioned. But not necessarily something that need, that would, is strong enough to. Remove your authorities and your, and what you're able to do as far as decisions for this, for your area and for the city. So. All right, with that, that's the, that's the over, quick overview. What questions do you have?
Questions, Councilor Flores.
Could you elaborate more on, on defining mixed? You use the word mixed a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Can you unravel that, an example maybe, because I'm confused about that term.
Yeah, I'll do my best on that. I think one of, one of the things that I immediately think about. When we talk about mixed is what's the impact statewide and what's the impact locally? So they'll make a case for both. So the pesticides one is a really great example. So for example, the city of Boulder, we're, was gonna, we're gonna put forward an ordinance where. You couldn't use pesticides whatsoever within the city limits. They were within their rights to do that, to say, we're gonna have an ordinance for that. But it really didn't make any sense for some of theirs, they have ag producers right there in Boulder County. So it was really hard to say, you can have, like, where are the lines on that? So that's a mixed use. So within the city limits, do you need pesticides? That's, I mean, that's a great question. I don't, I couldn't say. But when you're talking about a city within, within a county and there's ag producers in the county. Is that the same thing? So it's, it's really, it really pushes on the common sense button. What, what actually makes sense and, and can somebody come in and say, can the state come in and say, hey? You know, we've already, we've already allowed this pesticide. Too bad, city, you don't want it. That's too bad. You, you can't do that. So that would be a good example of a mixed one, if that makes sense.
Thank you. It does. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, thank you. Any sense if there's been a trend or not in the erosion of home rule authority? It's a pretty big, big question, but I would hope to think that CML is kind of like the, the big umbrella, hopefully. Does that or is able to do that?
There is an erosion.
Yes, CML was specifically started for home rule. I think it was for municipalities when it originally formed. And it was basically, okay, we have this new form of home rule government, let's band together. And as it grows, we can have one common agency. That kind of keeps an eye on Denver and they, they work, they're friends of the legislature and friends of the court. They're not, you know, it's a nonprofit association. But in the past. I've been doing this for twenty years and I've done this from the federal level all the way down to the local level. The past three years, I've focused only on the state, which has been a learning experience because the state does things a lot different. Problem with the state is they can move really fast. Or the good thing about the state, I shouldn't say negative or positive. And when the, the state, the legislature is controlled by more people that are not used to the rural. Or, and I consider Pueblo rural, even though we're not, but basically outside of Denver. They slowly erode. I don't think that it's intentional and it's not nefarious or anything. But they don't understand home rule and they don't understand this. So as you see these laws and legislations pass. They think that what they're doing at the state capital is good for the whole state. Without recognizing home rule or local control or local rights that we're used to. And as you know, in rural, you have one person representing multiple counties. In Denver, you have multiple people representing one county. So you know how that goes through the, the legislature. But rural, we move slower than the state and the Denver and the, the larger cities. So as this, you see this pushback on local control, specifically oil and gas, agriculture, these, these types of. Basically the revenue generating things in the state. We're used to moving slower on it and we're working, you know, in ag or oil and gas, whatever it is in rural Colorado. And it's too late by the time that we see what's going on and the people realize it, which is again going why. Gil's so important to have for city council in the city of Pueblo and the county. You know, you have to have somebody that's up there that can watch this fast and make these fast decisions. Which also goes back to the conversation that city council has been having for the past few weeks on. How to move faster on opposing, what to oppose, what's what your political capital behind. I think you're doing a great job with these emissions bills. That's great. When you spend your political capital, pick and choose your fights. If it's gonna be voted on and agreed and sent up from city council, like. I would suggest, you know, five to seven things that you really kind of focus on. And say, we're strongly opposed to this. We're coming together as a council. We're passing a resolution, whatever. But for the other bills that may not have as large of an impact. I think it's great for every city council person to send a letter to testify, even if it's a letter that. You talked about just sitting on the desk where you all sign off on it without having to vote and go through that process. That does make a difference, but for the big ones, you really want to concentrate on five to seven that are gonna impact our area. Come together strong and oppose that or, you know, be a proponent of it. And then the other little stuff that we're watching here and that you're watching, that Gil's watching. A letter's fine, testifying is fine, a phone call is fine. Just let them know how you feel. Sorry, I kind of went on a tangent to answer your question, but I guess the long answer, yes, you're seeing an erosion of local control, specifically outside of the Denver metro area.
So you're gonna see this, a really great example of that was two thirteen last year, which, which was that housing bill that it was a kind of an omnibus bill that. The governor had put together. He was really serious about it. And what he was trying to do at the time was to. Remove barriers to building closer to transportation. One of the concerns he has, of course, is that transportation is the number one emitter of. Carbon emissions here in Colorado and he's doing a lot to try to reduce that. So that's why you see him. Pushing really big on, on rail, on that front range rail, all of those things. So there was a lot of attacks on, and they were, it was. That bill, they always start out to the extreme, the most extreme thing they're gonna present first. So that they can use that from a negotiating standpoint. So it used to be that there was a lot of stakeholder ring. Before a bill hit, hit the floor, but that's not the case anymore. So what they do is, is they put the most extreme and then they do a sort of a stakeholder ring while the bill is, is in committee. And that's where you see a lot of that happening, which is not the best way to do it, but because there's so many bills every year. So what we're seeing and the, the, all the things that we saw in two thirteen aren't gonna come back. And it'll be toward the end of the session, they won't come back in one bill. They'll come back in multiple bills and it'll happen very, very, very quickly. So you're gonna want to have more than one, a weekly conversation with, with Gil at that point. And we're available to you as well, but that's where you've really gotta, you've really gotta be watching. So the last two weeks of April and the first, right up to the end of session, which is like the, I think it's like the eleventh or twelfth is when you've really gotta be paying attention. Daily, almost, we pay attention hourly. So.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Mr. Gomis, Councilor Gomis.
Have you guys been watching the latest attempt to border down the open meetings law?
Yeah, and it actually passed.
And just what I'm concerned about is that under the, under the guise that they need. To be able to move faster and to me shove it through in the darkness, basically, in my estimation. What is, I would like to know what CML thinks about it, even like to know what Gil thinks about it. And how does, how do, how do we approach that from our, our seats here in the diet?
I think first of all, you need to make your displeasure known. So what they did is they only did that for the legislature. They didn't apply, they didn't give that. So the legislature can, can have whatever meetings they want and whatever way they want. Which, yeah, I see you're shaking your head and I agree with you. It's, it was sort of like, it was, it was a punch to the stomach. But what had been happening is that there was a lot of negotiating. When they took the stake, that stakeholdering process away from all of us. And then they started doing that with other legislators. So, so when you think about it from the perspective that. Between seven hundred and fifty and a thousand bills are introduced in that one hundred and twenty day session. Between seven hundred and fifty and one thousand bills are introduced. And on average, five hundred new laws pass each and every session. So the, the legislators can submit themselves, can submit up to five. And then anything that happens after that is up to, up to the leadership of what they'll allow to be introduced or, or so forth. So when you see it, it's really quiet when this, from the session opens the month of February or January. Month of February, month of March, you'll start to see them pick up just a little bit. But they're, they push things off till the very end. So that's the latest strategy to do that. So that they can have a lot of discussions. So they'll, they blamed a little bit on it this year. They blamed it on the special session that largely passed HH after it failed. They, they went in and they did that. So everything kind of got pushed back, but in previous years, excuses have been different.
Can the leadership, if you submit five, does the leadership have any say in reference to what five they could say? Out of those five, don't submit this one. Is that how that works? Or it's just a five, you're entitled to, no matter regardless of what they say?
Regardless of what they say, but leadership decides when, when they're introduced and then they decide what committee are they're assigned to.
Yeah, they could send it to a Killa committee. I, I mean, you could introduce five bills and if leadership doesn't like it, they'll never seize the light of day.
Alright, thank you.
I think that there's this premise out there that because we are home rule city, that we can. Reject a lot of the bills that come out of the capital that affect us criminally. And that we can put ordinances in place that supersede that. And so that is, let's clear the air because a lot of times people use home rule city in there, you know? And they have no clue. And if the community has no clue, we just continue on this little chaotic. Education of home rule city. So give me an example of something that may have happened at the capital. That Pueblo could put into place to supersede that. So, because we don't, we don't have, you know? We don't want, necessarily want it here in our community. Like I know, for example, you know, the. The safe injection sites. Okay? Now, they aren't trying to impede on us for home rule city. Say that passes. Does, would Pueblo in that case have to make a move to put an ordinance in place? That says that we, that's great, they're all around the state, but here in Pueblo, that's not for us.
So I'm gonna answer that with two parts and then Brian will jump in too. So. So let me go to. Safe injection sites. So to answer your question in short, not in its current form. So that bill and it was reintroduced, as you know. And so in its current form, it says, it'll say, you still have the choice. The primary reason that they did that one is because, that they're trying to push that is because it's federally, it's illegal, right? So federally, it's illegal, but there are safe injection sites, literally, and they're being funded somehow in Denver. So they're trying to get, provide cover. So if Denver wants to do them, they can do them. So you would probably have to come back at some point and say. If you didn't want them or if you did want them, you'd have to discuss that, but you still have that power in, under this bill's current form. When you talk about what you can do in the face of some of the things, some of these statewide. I'm thinking very specifically about. The suite of bills that either reduced, greatly reduced. What qualified as a felony a few years ago. And I know that this body, if they could have done anything about that, they would, it would not, they would not have been okay with it. That being said, there was an ordinance that you, I believe you passed last year, if I'm correct, that said if it reduced the amount. Where somebody could be, could go to jail on or something like that. So there are specific things like that that can actually, that you can do that's not. If, if I was to go case by case, I would refer you to your attorney. But there are ways to get around this and you guys have already done some of those. And I think that was really, really great that you did it. It was, it was effective. And that's where you really use your home rule, but you guys can't, there's, there's nothing in this statute that says. You know what? The state passed that. Screw those guys. We're gonna do it our own way. You know, that doesn't, the home rule certainly doesn't give you the power to overturn something that is, is. Is sent up by the state. But there's, there's ways around some of these things and you'll find that in a lot of these bills, there are provisions for, for you to, to act on your own accord.
So. Just, just thinking about how we, we reduced. The amount in that one ordinance that we put forth. Could you take like, say, if any? Like the example of, I think anything under four grams of fentanyl is considered a misdemeanor. Would you be able to take that and reduce it to anything under two grams? Is a misdemeanor locally?
I have no way, I, I don't know that specifically. Not a lawyer, so I wouldn't be able to say.
Are there, that's the one thing, you know, that I was trying to find out with a lot of this. Decriminalization, is there something on a local level that we could do to? Allow for maybe those. But then again, I don't know, because it would be like a county, county state case more so than a municipal case. So would that? Be different?
So under the municipal code, we can put criminals, criminal ordinances, criminal violations in our code. Anything that doesn't involve felonies and it can't directly conflict with the, the state statute. So. So there, there may be some room to take a look at that. We'd have to compare, see what the state statute says versus what we say, but right now. The city has violations in the code for possession of drugs and actually possession of drug paraphernalia. And I know we definitely have marijuana. Don't believe that we regulate. The, any other drugs are usually cited into county or district court.
Do you think it's worth a conversation to see if we can do some things here locally that. You know, puts the criminalization back into a lot of the things that we're experiencing. you know, puts the criminalization back into a lot of the things that we're experiencing that were taken away by the higher courts?
Sure, we can take a look at those offenses, particular offenses and see if there's anything that we can, we can do on that. Um, uh, the, the amount that was set for the theft from merchant was amount that was set. It wasn't actually lowered. It was just set and that was just for the, the mandatory jail threshold. Um, but we can certainly take a look at those other charges and we can see what we can do.
Yeah, cause I mean, we're, we're, you know, nothing's getting really better, not a whole lot's getting better. So what can we do here locally to try to, try to, um, you know, I hate to say arresting people is a better thing, but you know, accountability is always, I mean, it's just been a part of life since I've known, you know, you have to have to be accountable rather than to, um, have free rein to, to do things. You know, I was just, um, gonna, I'm gonna bring up some documentation forward about like when I talk about, um, the environmental hazards that we're experiencing, um, evidenced by other city and their data and what they've, they've put forth. But, um, yeah, that's, that was part of this session was to, you know, clear everybody's, uh, home rule city means we're the ultimate power. Um, and, and what can we, you know, what can we do with our power? Because like I said, a lot of people just think of your home rule city, you can, you can result that, but.
I would, um, as far as those things go, I would be really curious to hear what the Pueblo Police Department would say if, when if I ask them, what's gonna actually make a difference for you?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would, that, I'd be really curious as to what their answer is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, um, start from there.
Yeah, I think it's gonna have to be.
They're the ones that need the support, right? They're the ones that, they're in the front lines and they can tell you what's gonna make a difference for them. And I, I feel like you guys have a pretty good connection there.
Mm-hmm.
Already to ask that question and find out what they, what they think.
Worth the discussion. Yes, obviously they're gonna have to be in there.
I, I don't see any reason not to have the discussion.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so.
Regina.
Yes, Councilor Martinez.
Thank you. My thought and suggestion is this, that we bring Sarah and her staff, Carla and her staff, the council and the police department together, and we discuss some of the things that, and, and the legislators that represent this part of the state to discuss some of those things in, in a work session or a Saturday session, whatever you wanna call it. Um, you know, I, I, I have some concerns as it relates to, to how, how the northern part of the state looks at Pueblo. Again, I served in the, in the largest city in the state and then the, and in a suburb, which is a larger city in the state too and, uh, and, and dealing with the CML, there are people that represent the CML that from, from Greenwood Village and Cherry Hills, and they don't even come close to being the size of Pueblo. And, and yet we're not represented there. That, that's a whole nother paradigm of, of my discussion here. But I think we, if we had a, a works, on a work session or Saturday session, whatever we wanna call it, and we get together and bring these people in, maybe we can get some things accomplished and get some answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, and yes, I'm Councilor Martinez.
So it's, it's end of March, kind of, which means it's basically already done with session, which means it's Christmas. Um, isn't it close? Are, aren't the bills to, um, like, uh, legislatures can no longer introduce new bills? They have to ask for special permission from their respective leadership, correct? Yes.
And we saw last session, bills introduced twenty-four hours before the session closed.
Do we have a feeling on what that vibe is this? Cause what I'm hearing, I, I guess from, um, other colleagues is that they, because there's been so many bills last session that were introduced on a really short timeline, that both leadership in the, both the House and the Senate have kind of put the kibosh on a lot of those late bills. So I'm curious on what the vibe is from you all. Maybe it's the Gil question too, I don't know.
Yeah, well, it's a Gil question. Um, it's a question that we can answer too. Gil might have a, a different, um, point of view on it. They did, they did commit to putting a kibosh, as you say, on that. Um, that being said, I'll give you an example, um, so, um, they can have their five bills in and we have no idea what those are, first of all. Um, and then a really great example is we worked really hard over the summer on this, um, broadband right away fee. Um, and, uh, Rod, or not Rod Pelton, Byron Pelton from the, um, Western Slope, CCI, um, a few other La Plata County Commissioner, um, we all signed on to this bill. Um, there was something else that they wanted to do, so it was introduced, but before it got to the committee, it was held over. Which is, they can bring it back at any time because they wanted a different, they wanted to go in a different direction, the, the JTC did. So, um, that bill is sitting in limbo. There's, that's not the only one that does that. So they can introduce something, there's a lot of, there's a lot of strategy and maneuvering about what they're doing. And it's, it's, think about it the same way, when you guys are really trying to get something done and you have to have a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, opinions at the table and it's really fast paced and it's, there's a whole, there's just so much happening. Um, it's very easy to miss things and it's very easy for things to go, um, to just, to just completely fall through the cracks. Um, I, I don't think that even though there was a lot of lip service given to, they're not gonna push off till, um, the end on things. I haven't seen any evidence that it's gonna go in a different way so far. So, um, we're, we're worried, of course, we're worried about all of these air quality bills. We've heard that there's, um, a whole lot more coming that we may have seen, we may see, have seen less than half of what will be introduced, all told. Um, some of the bills that they introduced earlier to test the fences. Um, it, it's just, there's a, a very clear, we wanna get these things done. And there's not a lot of, what is the actual impact of what we're doing? Um, it's just like, there's, they feel very passionately, um, and it's not all of the legislators. It's just a few of them that feel very passionately that they need to put their name on some very big um, movement, would be it, um, criminal, um, justice reform or environmental or ag or whatever it is. Um, they're, they're moving forward very much thinking that they're doing the right thing. So, it's just a strategy.
Okay, and then you had something else that you brought to the table and you talked to.
Oh, just, it's just for your reference. It's just, there's, there's two things, just so you know exactly about home rule. So when you wanna go back, that's the, um, Legislative Services Brief on that, that's updated in twenty twenty because, um, there were some things that changed in nineteen. Um, so that's the latest version. And the other one was just a quick reference guide for you for Robert's Rules of Order. Sometimes when you're in the middle of a meeting and you're like, wait, wait, what just happened? Wait, did we do this right? You wanted just something really quick. Um, Robert's Rules of Order is about this thick. So this is just a really quick, um, vast reference, just for you. It was just a little extra, cause I know that sometimes, um, it gets a little when you're, especially when you're trying to get something done and you're trying to do it very, um, correctly. So that's all that that was. So that's all we had. Um, we're happy to talk about anything else you guys wanna talk about. Um, I, I think, um, that about covers it unless there's something else you guys wanted to ask us.
Well, I know there was, um, some question, um, when we had our work, uh, which, work session retreat in regards to the, um, mayor, city council versus the city manager, um, city council form of government.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, we had a.
Let me, can we pull up, can I get the slides again and I'll go back to that slide? I didn't hit on that too much. So what was your question specifically?
The question is, is that, you know, the public is still works under the mindset of a city manager, um, city council form of government. So it's more the education is for them to understand that there are two different roles now. You know, cause they can blow up our phone with a bunch of stuff and we act, some of it, we act as a middleman, like we can't call the different departments and give direction like we did when we were under city council, city manager form of government. And so, um, we're just, you know, basically going over the roles because I talked to Marissa again today, she'd mentioned it to me. She said that she didn't, she wasn't able to get that together. And so.
So I'm gonna refer back to this. In municipalities without a manager, the governing body itself must supervise and coordinate municipal administration collectively or by division of responsibilities among the members of the Board of Trustees or the City Council. So, uh, most of the cities and, and smaller towns are, are trustees instead of city council. So think about it this way, if somebody's.
Strong mayor.
This is strong mayor.
Mm-hmm.
So with a strong mayor, think about it, the same as the governor and the legislature, or the president and Congress. So you guys are like the legislature, the mayor is like the governor. So that make, helps everybody really understand what that difference is because everybody, most everybody knows that. So what you're responsible for and what you have the powers to do are different than the, the execu, the executive branch and you're the legislative branch. Um, if that helps, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's why you're, um, adopt a budget, but the mayor prepares the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you act on the ordinances, um, she's gonna propose, propose the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And then you guys decide whether to act on it. And then there's certain things that, that the mayor's gonna have veto rights on.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, yeah, if you can think about it that way, then it, that helps a lot, I think.
Well, I think we, we know it, it's.
You know that, but yeah, if, if somebody's having a hard time understanding, I think that's a really simple um, and relatable way to explain it. And that's how I, that's definitely how I explain it.
Mm-hmm.
So, does that answer your question?
Not, not really. I mean, for, I, I, my question's already answered. Like I said, I think I really would like for maybe a reading of the charter for both the mayor and the city council roles in a work session for the public to get a better understanding of, so.
So you know what might be really great, because you guys already understand this. What might be really great is, um, if one of you were to write an op-ed sort of explaining the differences so that the public knows. Because I know that they come to you and expect to, to do that. I don't know if anybody's gonna sit, to tell you the truth, I don't, I wouldn't sit through the reading of a charter
Mm-hmm.
to have my questions answered. But you do it however you want.
Mm-hmm.
But I think if it was just something really simple, like, here's the difference, here's what we can do, here's what we can't do.
Mm-hmm.
Just so you know, these are the powers and, and this is, this is how this is gonna go. But if you guys wanna read the charter, that's, you guys do that.
It's a couple of pages. When, in reality, it's just a few pages.
Is it just a few pages?
Yeah, it's just a few pages.
Yeah.
And, and.
If you guys, yeah.
Yeah, under the description.
It's, it doesn't hurt to educate, right?
Mm-hmm.
Councilor Mastry, we, the, the law department could put together something with sites to the charter. If you wanted to put something together for the public that outlines everybody's duties with sites to the charter and the ordinances.
Mm-hmm.
On what the council does and what the mayor does, if you'd like them, if you'd like us to do that.
Yeah, like I said, we just made this transition and the public doesn't understand the transition, so. Yes, Dana.
One, one final question, and I was remiss of thinking about this earlier, but to your point about education and November of twenty twenty-one, we debruised from Tabor. So, you know, there, as you in the literature, there's a hundred and three municipalities. And just wondering how many have, have done that? Or I know that some have tried to do it. I know Colorado Springs tried as well at the same time and, and, um, it did not succeed. But anyway, just a note of education of what that meant when we accomplished that.
So if we know anything about Coloradans, we know that we passionately love Tabor. Um, and it's one of the things that, um, sort of the Batman Joker paradox that a lot of things happen, um, because they're trying to get around Tabor.
Mm-hmm.
But Tabor, I think, um, so that's always a super complicated one to do. Um, as far as how many cities, I don't, I, I don't know that off the top of my head either.
I was trying to find it real quick, but I could get it to you. I could email it.
Yeah, we don't, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay, Councilor, I could just add something else. At, at, for the Bar Association, we used to do educational programs that we then would put on public television and it would loop.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have the ability, I believe, to do that at the city. So if you wanted to do an educational program where there's like, uh, question and answer or something like that, we could do that in conjunction with a member from, from city council and, and create a program that then would loop. So people could watch it on public television. It would loop on the TVs that we have here throughout the city. So that's another option for education, if you wanna educate.
Yeah, that's good. That's a good option. Um, Counselor Flores.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a comment you made. You kind of inferred that when we had the city form of government, that we had the ability to go over his head or her head directly to the employees. And we don't have that, we didn't have that ability with the city manager. We're still the executive branch and we did not have, uh, the right under the city manager form of government. And the mayor form of government is really the same. The, uh, we, everything goes through the mayor, everything goes through the city manager.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't have the right before, under the city manager form of government, to go over the head of the city manager.
But we could go directly to the city manager.
And we go directly from there. I don't think there's a difference. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, I think that's their understanding of it. Like I said, the public's.
Oh, yeah. That was.
It's the public's.
Yeah, they probably do.
And so that's why, just to try to defer that a little bit. You know, cause you know, a lot of people are angry and, um, sometimes you can't get past the first sentences on the phone, you know, but. And, you know, it's like, you just wasted all that, cause I, I mean, I could act as your middleman and take it to the mayor, but here's her number.
No, I, I totally get that. And I, I have a very hard time, um, not answering my phone. So I understand, um, what you're saying, but, um, yeah, just a little education, just a little context. And then, um, hopefully they have enough civics, um, background and education, they can understand what you mean.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then you already know this, there's some people that are never gonna be happy.
Oh.
They just want, they just want somebody to yell at, so.
Mm-hmm.
And that's good too.
Yeah.
That's democracy, so.
Exactly.
Alright, guys.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Anything else from council before we adjourn? Okay, alright, the time. Oh, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to read a statement I've been working on a little bit.
And is that for our guests or is that for?
No.
Okay, alright, so you're dismissed.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
One of the things I just wanna bring in, this has been on my mind for a while. I'm concerned that, and I have to read some of it. I'm good for that many past and present city projects don't get completed. It's not because of the lack of funding. I believe the abil, the ability to deliver the goods have been undermined. I don't believe this council or any other council's intent is to move, is to not move their constituents' issues forward. I think we fall prey to stopgap measures like the need for more studies, or we can't proceed because of insurance considerations, et cetera. For instance, in my district, right now I have homes slated for demolition and they have been for the last six years. Two more properties just recently went up and have burned to the ground. The latest property behind a clamshell steakhouse at that, at this point, I don't care what creative plan we utilize to kill the dying and withering, on the vine attitudes and disease we have. We are now and have been suffering for decades. And I'm not blaming this council and any other council. I don't think it's intentional. I just think we're kinda caught in a wedge here. I would entertain urban renewal, taking over possession of these two properties and/or any other agencies that are willing to eradicate these standing death traps and replace them with new homes. If anyone has a better idea or a quick turnaround alternative, I'm all yours. Thank you.
Counselor Latino.
Thank you. I would like to echo what, uh, Councilman Gomez, um, just stated. Because I'm in the same type of situation. Okay, districts four and district two have, uh, have, uh, for the long time been, uh, how do I wanna say it? Um, not taken seriously in terms of where the other parts of the city lie. And I don't know why, um, but I think it's time that we start looking at those kinds of things. And, uh, we're working on those kinds of things. I put a committee to.
And we're working on those kinds of things. I put a committee together. We've also done a tour of the of of our district as relates to the infrastructure, et cetera. I think another thing that we need to really seriously consider, and I've mentioned this to the chief. It's time that we come into the twenty-first century with our police department and have substations in the four quadrants of the community. Again, having been in other places, we need to take a look at what's going on there to. Help. Our community move forward.
Um, Counselor Martinez. Counselor Gomez, are these properties private properties or are they public?
Well, there's one right behind the clamshell. Two of these are, I believe they're private. I'm not sure about the other one, but my concern is. You have a property, it's sitting there for six years on the demolition list. Maybe it's me, but I think it's a long time. And now I'm afraid the same fate's gonna fall behind the property behind clamshell. I don't want any more of that in my district. I want these issues solved. And I'm not putting on the intent of anybody here. Don't get me wrong. I know we all wanna have this fixed. I just think we could court in this circular firing squad. And we've gotta look at ways to get this stuff done a little quicker, okay? That's all I'm saying.
You know, Mayor Graham, you appointed me to the. Board for basically condemned properties. And I've been part of that board for two years since I've been on council and they have not had one meeting. In the time that I've served. They've never even called me to say, or if they're having a meeting, they've never reached out to me and said they were having a meeting, but that is a commission or a board that. Maybe needs to be utilized, otherwise these condemned properties are getting lost in translation. I mean, we know that they're expensive. It's it's very expensive. You're you're talking, especially if they need any sort of abatement. They just put one, an R F P out for mine, one in my district. It came in from seventy-four thousand to some of them were up to two hundred and fifty thousand, the range in the. The prices. And we approved it, but it's been sitting there still for, probably whenever we approved it was what, three or four months ago? I haven't seen anybody even starting to work on it. So it's, I think our list was like at one point two million at one time. I mean, it's expensive. It's not cheap. And then as the years go by, it just gets more expensive and more expensive. So I guess that's something we'd have to have a meeting with Andrew about. Our work session with Andrew about and then also see how we can get that board up and running or if it really even exists.
Yeah, sure. I think a work session with Mr. Hayes is probably warranted. I do know. Cuz we're dealing with a couple houses on the east side right now that were torched, that we were waiting for permits from the state. And I know that that takes up a great time of the process, but maybe he could come in and tell everybody how long and what the process is. From start to finish, if it's a property the city owns as well, so.
Yeah, cuz those two east side properties were approved prior to the one in District One, so. If there's still, there is a process and to understand that process, but also to get that board up and going. So that we could possibly move forward and help alleviate some of this blight.
I I just wanted to remind council that when a fire like that happens, you work through regional building too. And they have to, to in order for the city to put it on its demolition list, it has to go through the dangerous building code. They have to go through a due process. Process that allows the homeowner to come in and essentially remedy the situation. So there is a timeframe for doing that. And then what happens after they get on the demolition list is is up to the city and and budgeting typically. But I know that the C D P H E who awards or who hands out the permits for that abatement. That has to happen, particularly if it's an open air abatement, takes some time and that can be upwards of three months, so. That's even after you approve the money and they have awarded the project, then the contractor has to go out and get that permit. And that's really out of our control. That's really a function of C D P H E. So.
And then, and it is the tax, cost of the taxpayers and we have to find the money for it because. Just just putting a lien on these people's property isn't, we're not getting any of it back. And yet I know of a particular owner that has great assets and I think a foreclosure's. You know, not a foreclosure, but a judgment on him and go after his personal property cuz that's what they're doing. A lot of these people, they're just letting it go. They don't care. And it's at the expense of the taxpayers and they're still living in, maybe they have four of the rentals. Maybe they have, you know, some personal assets where they should be paying their own cleanup bills, so maybe that process. Should be looked at too, and maybe we should go a little further with a personal judgment.
Just one final thing. I think if I've got the stats right in this, eighty percent of what we we bring into our brains and we think about is visual. And I looked at some of this around our area. This is investment killer. I don't care what area town you are. People coming into investment, it's a lot of the areas are starting to look like Iraq, not like Pueblo and. I've really, I've had it in reference to, and I know my constituents have had it. We've been ignored a long, long time, folks. And all I'm asking is the compassion of this council to recognize that. Say, look, how do we put the priorities where they should be? Not where we think they should be, but where they actually should be. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
I wanna affirm that. My district.
I just wanna say that you you're gonna have a great opportunity when we start budget talks in September. Because the money has to be in the budget. There's four of us here, including the mayor, that voted for the existing budget, but there's a limit as to how much we put in there. So, you know, it'd be nice to have enough money in there that we could do every, everything that needs to be torn down. But you're gonna have the opportunity to us, you know, to. Look at how much you want, where you're gonna get this additional funding.
Would you be willing to come to my, this is a cheap shot here. I have my first town hall, March twenty-eighth, at the Lake Avenue Community Center, and I'm inviting everybody here in council to show up. And and hopefully can get a lot of the staff there, but this will be the first one of probably four I'm gonna try to do in my district. But these are the kind of things they've gotta know, that we're we're in the tune, we're not trying to ignore, but I think, like I said, we're kind of in the twilight zone, a lot of this stuff, and I wanna get out. I wanna see if we can get things better and I know you all do too. I'm not saying you're not, so don't, please don't get that wrong. Yep, exactly. I appreciate it.
We had a a building, a house that was just raised in the last couple of weeks, thanks to. Andrew Hayes Public Works. He's been gracious and great to help us work on those kinds of things. So again, not to be redundant. Or to be overzealous, my community, our community. Our community, meaning all of us. The east side is part of this, of this, of this city and it's time that we we look very diligently. And 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 look effectively at what these people, what our people need on that side of the town. Thank you.
All right, with that being said, anything else? Okay, meetings, it's seven oh eight P M and meeting is adjourned.